This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. I am calling this meeting to order. For the record, we have all commissioners present this evening. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our government, our reasonable liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. Moving on to our announcements, Randy, if you would please review for us the public and virtual meeting rules?
Sure, I'd be happy to. For non-agenda items, courtesy of the floor, will be at the beginning and the end of the agenda. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor, drive to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, simply raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please keep your microphone on mute to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask a question.
Thank you very much. Moving on through our announcements, I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on February 9th and February 16th to discuss legal and personnel matters. For Agenda Item D and E, I'm going to turn this over to our interim manager, Randy Cope. We have a recognition to get started of Citronia Fire Department firefighters.
Sure. It's my honor to present these recognitions here this evening. On behalf of South Whitehall Township and the Board of Commissioners, we felt it was very appropriate to recognize two very brave and special individuals tonight. These two individuals showed great courage and bravery during a large house fire in Salisbury Township on November 16th, 2021. Tonight, we honor and recognize volunteer firefighters Andrew Claus and Jared Dyacinsky for exhibiting outstanding performance and exceptional courage on November 16th while ensuring the safety of others. We honor both of you for your commitment and dedication to serve South Whitehall Township and our surrounding communities. Thank you. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, we'd love to get a picture with you.
And next on our agenda, we have another recognition tonight. It is the retirement of Maria Mulane, Esquire, the Solicitor for the South Whitehall Township Zoning Hearing Board. And Randy, if you'd please present that recognition as well.
I'd be very happy to. All right. So there may be some individuals in the audience this evening that may wish to comment as well. But tonight, I wanted to start by reading an award for former zoning hearing board solicitor Maria C. Mulane. This distinguished service award is presented to Maria. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, township staff, and citizens of South Whitehall would like to recognize your 38 years of stellar service to South Whitehall Township. Additionally, we thank you for the 33 years you served as South Whitehall Township Zoning Hearing Board Solicitor. Your outstanding commitment to our township has truly been an example and inspiration for all. Therefore, it is with great pride and appreciation that the Board of Commissioners and township staff hereby present this distinguished service award as a token of our gratitude to you, Maria C. Mulane. It has been an honor and privilege to work with you throughout the years, and we are deeply grateful to you. We wish you the very best in your future, and please know you'll be greatly missed. Duly presented by South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners and Township Staff, this 16th day of February 2022 in lawful session duly assembled. Maria?
I have a comment.
Is there anyone on the board who would like to make any comment at this time before we proceed?
Yes. Maria? Commissioner Wolk. I just want to say that based on my observations over the years, you're one of the most outstanding value-added performers in any field that I've seen in my entire lifetime. You'll surely be greatly missed, as are zoning hearing board solicitor. In fact, you're close to being irreplaceable. Thank you for everything you've contributed and accomplished for the township, and best wishes as you move into the next phase of your life.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolk. Well said. I believe Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Yes. Maria, I'll keep it very short. Thank you so much for what you've done for our township. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Solicitors Ada.
Thank you, President Kelly. Maria, I've considered you to be a friend since I got out of the Army in 1989. Your professionalism and expertise in zoning and municipal matters is second to none. On top of that, and I think even more importantly, you're a good person. Thank you.
I would like to add a short comment. I've had the pleasure of being in the audience on multitude of meetings just to observe, and I was always greatly impressed by your professionalism, your historic knowledge of the township, and your application of the law clearly and strongly to protect the ordinances of South Whitehall Township. I do thank you for your many years of service. You will be greatly missed. Thank you. We wish you the best.
Maria, I don't know you. I'm new to the board, but I've heard so much about you, and I have to echo what Mike said, that you will be missed from what I've heard. You're an outstanding asset to South Whitehall Township. So thank you, and best of luck in your next chapter.
I would also like to thank you with all my heart. I wasn't always up here, but I was listening in to many meetings over the past few years. Thank you so much for all you've done for us. Thank you.
And now, anyone in the audience, is public comment time?
I jumped the gun getting up there. Sorry.
That's okay.
When she said something about the board, since I'm on the zoning board, I instantly said, oh, it must be me, or something like that. But it was not. I'm Don Klein, I'm the chairman of the zoning board. And we have two other gentlemen here from the zoning board, Mr. Kretschel and Mr. Eisenberg. Maria, it's like, I think what you said, possibly irreplaceable. I've been on the board over 20 years myself, but 38 years, that's an accomplishment that will probably not be met too easily. Maria has always been caring about the township, the cost that the township, the people in the township, and the rules that we abide by zoning. She's always been careful to make sure that they were always done properly and in the right way. There's a lot more things I could say about her. She told me not to say too much because she might cry, which is probably going to happen, but nevertheless, there's not really enough that I could say, and I miss her already. So with that note, the award you were given by the commissioners is well deserved, and I thank you for giving her that award. And on behalf of my other colleagues on the board, thank you very much. And Maria, we love you to bits, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Eric Shock. This is actually fortuitous, I guess, that I'm here this evening because I didn't actually plan on it. But I've been practicing 30 years, so I guess that means every time I was at South Whitehall, I saw Maria. And part of me wants to say I'm glad she's retiring because then maybe I can bring my B game instead of my A game that I had to bring every time I came to the meeting. But in all candor, I probably had to tell a lot of my clients very often, guys, we really, really need to be prepared because the zoning board knows what they're doing, and they have a solicitor who has been doing this a long time and absolutely knows what she's doing. So we're not going to get by on fluff. We better come prepared. So all of you are correct. We will miss Maria. But maybe I'll breathe it a little easier next time I go, but I don't know who's taking her place, so I shouldn't say that. But congrats. It's been a pleasure, and I will tell you this, too. I had a phone call, and I found out Maria returned my phone call the day of, her first day of retirement. That's how dedicated she is. So thanks. It's a pleasure. I'm glad I ended up being here.
Are there any other public comment? David, there's one in the chat, please.
We have one in the chat. We're going to try the virtual. So I've unmuted Jerry Harbison's microphone. Jerry, please go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maria, I had the privilege of working with Maria for the 28 years I was there. Make no mistake about it, that was her board, the zoning hearing board. They demanded a lot from their solicitor, and she delivered. She's the best at her craft unequivocally. That board was prepared like no other, and she was a great person to talk zoning with. Zoning speak is very hard, but she was able to wade through it and make people understand, the residents, the board. And I know that there's... You want to surround yourself with good people, and the zoning board knew that. There were zoning board members that would not serve unless Maria was their solicitor. So that tells you something there. Maria, I love you, and enjoy your retirement because you've earned it. In South Whitehall, they had the best. So good luck to you, Maria.
Thank you, everyone. We wish you the best in your retirement, Maria. Thank you again. Shifting gears back to our meeting, the next agenda item is courtesy of the floor, which is public comment for any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, moving along, we will go to the meeting minutes from February 2nd of 2022 for approval tonight. Have the board had an opportunity to review. Are there any questions?
I have one comment that I delivered to Tracy this afternoon. It's minor on page two. The vote on the ordinance workshop meeting minutes was four to zero, not five to zero. I did not vote because I wasn't present at that meeting.
Thank you for that correction. Do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes as amended? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no ordinances tonight, so we'll move right into resolutions. Item 7A, we have a resolution bonding the tax collector of South Whitehall Township and authorizing the tax collector of South Whitehall Township to appoint deputies to serve for the township of South Whitehall. Randy, if you would help us with that resolution?
Sure. The resolution in front of us this evening is a standard resolution that bonds our tax collector, Lynanne Cosin, and authorizes the tax collector to appoint her deputies, in this case Scott K. Adams III and Suzanne Matty, to serve South Whitehall Township. The township did participate in Lehigh County's competitive bid for joint tax collector bonds to secure bond pricing. Staff is respectfully requesting this resolution be approved this evening to finalize the process and keep our tax collector moving.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Anything from the public? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution bonding the tax collector of South Whitehall Township and authorizing the tax collector of South Whitehall Township to appoint deputies to serve for the township of South Whitehall? Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 7B, we have a resolution appointing Key Codes Inspection Agency as a temporary code enforcement officer for South Whitehall Township. Randy, I will ask again if you would help us with this resolution?
I think Dave Manhart's going to take this one.
It sounds good, David. Thank you.
So again, this is just a resolution to appoint Key Codes as a third-party code enforcement agency. Our code enforcement officers going out on medical leave, so we need some temporary coverage to help out with code enforcement. They've helped us out before and actually did a really great job, so we're looking forward to working with them again.
Very good. Thank you, David. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Anything from the public? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution appointing Key Codes Inspection Agency as a temporary code enforcement officer for South Whitehall Township? I'll meet the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
You might want to check the mics on the other side.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 7C, we are moving right along. We have a resolution extending conditional offer of employment to the entry-level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to candidates number 80325 and 29811, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. Chief Dorni, would you help us with this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Just in front of you for process again through the civil service guidelines, requesting permission to grant a conditional offer of employment to those two candidates, number 80325 and number 29811. They are the next two candidates on our list. They've been approved by the Civil Service Commission and would just allow us to begin the background process, not necessarily hire them, but start the process to move forward with our process to finally hire somebody. So I'm respectfully requesting those two candidates be moved forward in the process.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Are there any comments from the board?
I just have a question. Chief, we've also had some other approvals. How are they coming along?
That's why we're here tonight. They did not pass our background process.
Okay.
So, yeah. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution extending conditional offer of employment to the entry-level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to candidates number 80325 and 29811, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Chief Dorni. Moving along, we do have a change to the agenda. Items 7D and E have been removed from tonight's agenda and will be moved to the March 2nd, 2022 agenda. I will move down to item 7F, which is a resolution extending conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Proposed Parking Lot Improvements 798 Housman Road and granting an additional waiver pursuant to SALDO sections 313-13F3 and 312-43. David, if you would?
Yes, so this is an application. The property is located at 798 Housman Road. The plan proposes construction of the driveway and elimination of parking, stormwater management, and the installation of a new water line. The total site acreage is roughly six acres. The subject property is zoned IC1. Lehigh Valley Health Network is the owner and applicant. The Board of Commissioners granted approval on February 17th, 2021 with conditions. So at this meeting, they're requesting a 12-month extension. Additionally, they're requesting waivers from SALDO that have to do with recording the plan prior to building permits, and they can explain that a little bit more. But there's a water line issue and a parking lot issue, so there's kind of two things going in tandem, and they can kind of explain the status of that. To date, they've satisfied five of the 12 conditions. Some of those conditions have to do with recording of the plan. So with that, we have no objections to either request, and I can turn it over to the applicant to answer any further questions.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. I am Fietele Gonzalez. I'm with Langen Engineering. I'm the civil engineer for the project.
Good evening.
Are there any questions, or should I just give you a brief kind of backstory on this?
If you want to just give us a short summary, that would be helpful.
Sure. So the project that I'm involved in is a parking lots improvement project. And since this piece of property was originally part of the Lethair Crest property, and then they were separated and purchased by Lehigh Valley Health Network, there was a water line that was common to both of them. So as we were going through the process of land development, the township indicated that they wanted this water line issue resolved, and therefore they made that a condition of approval. However, the water line is being designed by a separate company. And as they're working out the issues with the township, just taking additional time, so we cannot have our plan signed by the township until this water line issue is resolved, and therefore we can't record the plan until this water line issue is resolved. However, the parking lot improvements really are independent of the water line issue. The client, our client, the applicant, would like to be able to make the parking lot improvements, install the new lighting, things like that, while this issue is being worked out.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Osborne?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I would just like to ask our engineer if you have an opinion on this particular topic and what that might be.
Thank you, but we, our company is conflicted out of this, so I do apologize. I cannot speak for this project.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Keystone Consulting Engineers actually was the reviewer of the project.
Okay, I'm sorry. I probably missed that. Yeah.
I don't know if... Did you review the water line? No. Okay.
Okay. All right. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board on this? Anything from the public?
We were out there on site when they did, excuse me, some exploratory digging on the water line. So we are in the process of setting a meeting up with them to help them get these two lines separated. So we are well aware of what's out there, and we are working hand-in-hand with them in Public Works to solve this issue.
Very good. Thank you for that update, Herb. I appreciate it. If there are no other comments, we can go ahead. Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Proposed Parking Lot Improvements 798 Housman Road and granting an additional waiver pursuant to SALDO sections 313... Sorry, 312-13F3 and 312-43?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kelly, I do mean to interrupt, but I apologize for that. Perhaps, again, I missed the reasons, but can you share with us why resolutions in D and E were taken from the agenda?
Randy, would you speak to that? That was a matter that you were handling.
Sure. We were awaiting the agreements to be signed by the other two parties, and we didn't get them until late today and haven't had a chance to review everything to make sure it was ready for tonight's action. So to give us a little bit more time to review everything, make sure everything's in order, we made the decision to put this off to the March 2nd agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Moving on to Agenda Item 7G, it's a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Shia Ithna Ashiri Hamad of Pennsylvania. David, are you going to help us with that one as well?
Again, I can give some background on the project. So this is for the mosque property located at 1500 Redview, so right over behind us. The plan was to take down the old mosque and put up a new mosque. Board of Commissioners approved conditional and preliminary plan on February 17th, 2021 with 16 conditions. So tonight, they're asking for a three-month extension. To date, they've satisfied four of the 16 conditions of approval. We received a plan today with some updated to address a lot of the comments of reviewing the Shade Tree Commission as a bench near utility. So they submitted a plan today, so we're currently reviewing it, and we'll be checking those items off as we go through the review. So we have no objections to the request, and if the, I believe the applicant or representative for the applicants here, answer any questions.
Good evening. Eric Shock from Fitzpatrick Lunsen Booba. Everything Dave said is accurate. With respect to the open conditions, we think with the plan that's been submitted and the other work attended to that, that the engineers done, we should be addressing all of the engineering conditions. And obviously, we submitted it, and we just need to get responses back that what we've done actually satisfies those conditions. There are a couple of conditions related to an agreement, a couple of agreements. We've taken care of those. I delivered one of the agreements signed to Mr. Adams tonight. Obviously, this is a nonprofit place of worship, unlike a developer who often wants to get in the ground as quick as they can. They have other things going on, and they're working on, you know, looking at how they'll get this constructed, et cetera. So they remain committed. I have encouraged them to do what they did, which is hurry up and start getting some of these conditions done so we don't have to keep coming back and asking for extensions. So I'm hopeful, which is why we only asked for three months, we're hopeful that this last plan set, I think the engineer has talked to Tony to go over everything to make sure they were on the right page with that, and we've spoken to the solicitor's office and taken care of what we need to with the solicitor's office. So we're in pretty good shape. So we're asking for your grant of a three-month extension because we're pretty comfortable that we won't have to come back and ask for another three months because we're close.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board on this resolution?
You answered mine. I was going to ask why only three months, but you seem to have answered.
Yeah, I mean, we could have put any... And I know why people... Yeah, I mean, we could have put any, and I know why people do it, but we said, look, we'll get on this, and we don't want to come in here saying a year and making it look like we're not really trying to wrap it up. So I'd rather come back in three months and tell you what went wrong rather than come in here and have to argue for something that I don't think we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the public? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Shia Itna Ashiri Hamat of Pennsylvania?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. On to item number 7H, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving and authorizing the entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Upper McConaughey Township and North Whitehall Township titled 2022 Parkland Area Summer Program Partnership. Mike Kukets, if you would please present this item for us tonight.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. It's great having a chance to speak with you all, and I appreciate your feedback, your concerns, comments on this potential partnership. Believe we've addressed most things. I know it's very new to one of our staple programs in the township. So at this point in time, I'll just respectfully request that the board take into consideration the agreement via resolution to enter into the summer playground partnership.
Thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this resolution?
My only comment, Mike, was when we, when, from the last meeting, when you brought up the fact that I mentioned about kids who, you know, parents may not be able to, and I saw that, you did put that into your plan, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Mike, I remember well our meeting. I believe it was last Monday. And I would like to just say I appreciate the work that you put into it, addressing as the best you can, you know, the concerns that you heard raised from this board. So I personally feel it was a very productive meeting, and I appreciate the effort you put into it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I think I just had a quick question, and I might have forgotten from the meeting, but you said at the last summer program, we had 450 kids enrolled across three sites. Is that correct?
Pre-COVID.
I'm sorry?
Pre-COVID, before COVID.
Okay, right. What are the three sites?
Traditionally, they've been Parkway Manor, Citronia, and Kratzler.
Okay.
They will most likely change this year due to some construction, however, but they'll still be at three school district facilities. I'm working with the school district right now to finalize which.
Is that all? Commissioner Hodges?
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I saw you pause.
Yeah, that's, that's it. No, Mike, you did put an awful lot of work into this, and I thank you. And, you know, like I said before, I just want to see the best possible program for our residents, our children. And I, I was hoping that we could accommodate them at our parks and eliminate that waiting list, have them remain in our township rather than have that waiting list and then, hate to use the word farm, but farm them off to a different township. I would like to keep them here on site and then have the parents incur that non-resident fee. We spoke. I just want to do what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Thank you for answering all our questions in detail, as requested.
Welcome.
I just have one comment. Thank you, Mike, for gathering all this information for us. You certainly have put together a very thriving program for the township. I think the one thing that was still a question in my mind as I read through the information was that South Whitehall looks like it's going to bear the responsibilities for all three townships with purchasing supplies, materials, field trips, t-shirts, as well as end of the year budgeting and administrative billing. And as I weigh those two things, I'm still, I'm still on the fence, and I have to agree with Commissioner Hodges. As you spoke last time, the issue of waiting lists for South Whitehall residents, and we're making our sites going to be a little bit less, number of students at each one. I too wonder if there's a way to work out so that no South Whitehall student or child who wants to participate in this program, if it were to be filled in our sites, ends up going outside of the township and paying a higher rate because they would be considered non-resident there. As I mentioned at the last meeting, and I'm sure the board shares this, my, my vision and focus always is making sure that our residents are provided for, and we have programs to meet the needs of our residents before we look to expand our program. So I'm, that would be my only comment, but I thank you for gathering all this information for us.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments from the public?
Commissioner Kelly, I can just make sure that I understand, and I might have missed what you said or your point and what you said, but my understanding is, yes, South Whitehall is going to buy the necessary, or, you know, the shirts and whatever, but we're going to be reimbursed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're doing it for economy of scale.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. That's what I, that's what I was.
Right. We're doing all of that work and then budgeting and having to build other townships at the end of the year. So we're, we're the clearinghouse for all of the purchasing and spending the money and then having to collect. It's a lot of administrative work was, was the thing that I had sort of picked up out of that explanation, so.
From an administrative standpoint, it doesn't make too big of a difference if my team orders 450 t-shirts as opposed to 1,200 on the, you know, it's an extra keystroke on the line or has a spreadsheet that tracks that kind of thing. But I certainly wouldn't want that one factor itself to be, like, if you're on the fence, don't, don't let me be the one to sway either way.
Thank you. If there is no other comment from the board or the public, do I hear a motion?
I do have one question, since it's been discussed at the last meeting and here again tonight. Does the partnership program meet the needs of the South Whitehall Township residents and children?
Yes. And as I've said before, whether we partner or not, I think our numbers will go down this year, which is a negative. You could consider it. But I also see that as a positive because I don't think we'll have any resident children on a waiting list. I think we'll have room in our program this year, again, whether we partner or not, because I think many of the children that have attended our program in years past will stay in their respective townships.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving and authorizing the entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Upper McConaughey Township and North Whitehall Township titled 2022 Parkland Area Summer Program Partnership?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries four to one. Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners. So it's the end of our resolutions. We will move on to our motions tonight. We have motion 8A. It's a motion to proceed with hiring a recruitment firm for the purpose of assisting the township manager in the recruitment process regarding the vacant township manager position. Randy, if you would help us with this motion?
Sure, no problem. On January 4th, the Board of Commissioners approved the release of a request for quotation to solicit quotes from recruiting firms to assist the township in filling the vacant township manager position. The deadline for these quotes was on January 28th at 3:00 PM. We did receive two proposals from qualified firms that specialize in executive job-level recruitment services and strategies. The full board and I interviewed both firms. In this case, those firms were Keystone Municipal Solutions and the Minor Center. I do want to thank both of those firms for their outstanding interviews and taking the time to answer the questions from the board and I, and we are here tonight to make a selection of one of these firms. I'll turn it back to the Board of Commissioners now for further discussion and a formal selection.
Thank you, Randy. I'll open this up to the board. Is there any discussion on this process to select a recruitment firm for our search for township manager?
I have a question. We've seen certain documentation, like the proposals. We haven't seen an agreement. So what does the township have in mind as an agreement with the selected firm?
Sorry. I think what will happen, Commissioner Wolk, is once a firm is selected, we will work with that firm. I'm sure they have a standard contract that they already have used for other municipalities for similar work. We would then pass that contract off to our solicitor for review and comment, and then move forward accordingly.
Thank you.
What would the timeframe be for doing that?
Can get started on that as soon as tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
I have a question, Commissioner Kelly, but I would like to make the motion that we do hire the Minor Center for the purpose of assisting the township in the recruitment. We did interview two firms. The Minor Center from Lafayette College has a tremendous wealth of experience in doing this. They're, they're local. They're out of, obviously, the Minor Center is out of Easton. The individual we'll be dealing with is out of Bethlehem. He probably understands South Whitehall Township better than the other firm, which is out of Harrisburg. Nothing against Keystone, but I think that the, having a local firm is more beneficial to South Whitehall Township residents. And as far as the position of a township manager, he's had a wealth of experience. I think there was 150 individual townships that he's been involved with, from hiring police chiefs, some consulting work, township managers, interim township managers. So I definitely would recommend that we go with the Minor Center, Lafayette College. And also, their cost was $6,500 versus $15,000. So I definitely think that there's a significant savings to the township in that alone.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy, do we have, we have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any board discussion?
President Kelly, I prefer Keystone Management Solutions, and I did understand fully, Commissioner Kennedy, your reason for that, and I respect that. One of the things that I've seen during these interviews is something that attracted me very much, and that is I got the distinct impression that Keystone Municipal Solutions has a broader bandwidth as far as being able to recruit outside of the Lehigh Valley and sometimes maybe even into middle Pennsylvania or other places in Pennsylvania or out of the state. So I would really like to see candidates and a firm who is really focused on recruiting from outside the Lehigh Valley, not excluding the Lehigh Valley, but also including other areas where we can bring someone in with a fresh set of eyes instead of someone who's a product of the Lehigh Valley, and it's difficult at times, you know, to see things a little bit differently, so.
Thank you for coming. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yes, I have a comment. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I was under the impression that Minor Center did recruit nationwide, and there was an example given at our meeting where he recruited someone from Atlanta, Georgia, I believe, to the Norristown area. So I do believe that his search is comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Are there any public comments? Yes, we have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion is to proceed with hiring the Minor Center for the purpose of assisting the township in the recruitment process regarding the vacant township manager position. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two nays. Motion carries three to two. Thank you. Moving on to motion 8B, we have a motion authorizing the board president to execute an independent contractor agreement to provide management services and professional assistance on a short-term basis while the township continues efforts towards fulfilling the current township manager vacancy. Randy, if I will have you speak on that as well before we go into discussion?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First and foremost, I do want to thank the Board of Commissioners for exploring this idea with me to provide assistance in my role as town, interim township manager. As you know, I've been in this interim role now since September 1st and navigating the day-to-day with our amazing staff here at the township. I can't speak highly enough of them. They've, they've really helped me out through this, this period since September 1st. I do see this as an opportunity to continue our outstanding progress here in the township as we prepare for the transition to a permanent township manager. Over the last six months, staff and I have been up to the challenge. I will continue to serve as interim township manager as long as the township needs me. I also realize that the recruitment of a township manager is no easy task and could take months before a successor is named. I personally feel this is an opportune time for an extra set of hands in our executive department to continue initiatives of the board, staff, and support our day-to-day operations here in the township.
Thank you, Randy. Is there any board discussion on this motion?
President Kelly, I didn't hear a motion. Was there one?
Oh, it's discussion.
Discussion. I'll make my comments after the motion, if that's okay.
I'll make a motion, if that's the case.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
What's that motion for?
Yeah, I think we need to specify who the motion is.
I apologize. Okay. Motion is to hire Paul Leonard, geez, I apologize, Leonard as an independent contractor, consultant for South Whitehall Township on a short-term basis.
And is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hodges. Or discussion, please.
Thank you, President Kelly. You'll find I don't say much of the dais unless I feel I have something to say and tonight have something to say on this particular topic. First, I suggested that this agreement would be discussed only after an executive session where we could talk about what I think are pretty sensitive legal discussions. However, that suggestion was obviously not accepted, which brings us to the agenda item tonight. I'm going to make a similar offer to my fellow commissioners to, at any time, make a motion to table or defer this topic until our next meeting or until we have an opportunity to have an executive session. It could be as early as tonight. If what I say makes anyone uncomfortable, including Solicitor Zater, that perhaps I'm touching too closely, legal items, perhaps you suggest that we stop and maybe find another venue, executive session. If that's okay. Okay, so here it goes. The board received this proposed agreement yesterday afternoon, and I found it to be a little concerning because it didn't seem to be consistent with some of the discussions that we had as a board. So my first, I'm going to start out by first asking a question of my colleagues. What is the problem we're trying to solve, and how does this agreement solve that problem? Okay. So I'd like to go through the draft paragraph by paragraph, and as I said, at any time, I'll entertain a motion to table, defer, or recess into executive session.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I also made a request that we have an exec section to review this agreement with our township solicitor present. Our township solicitor has not been present at any prior discussions, and I think it's appropriate for making a legal agreement of this nature that we would have had those discussions. This agreement says it's between the parties and the consultant. The parties include the township, which is the board, and actually, this agreement was written by the consultant, interim township manager. And actually, this agreement was written by the consultant, interim township manager Randy Cope and Solicitor Zader. As Commissioner Osborne noted, we received it yesterday. We've had just a little over 24 hours to review it and to prepare any comments. I will have comments as well. Some are of a legal nature, some are just of a factual nature. I share Commissioner Osborne's thought. If anybody thinks we get to a point where we're discussing a certain subject matter where we should retire to an exec session, I welcome you to express your viewpoint on that, especially Solicitor Zader. The fact that the matter is, we're being asked to approve an agreement tonight. We haven't talked to our solicitor about this agreement. We haven't discussed the legal issues associated with the agreement. I think that's unfortunate. I think that's inappropriate. I'd like to say one other thing before turning back to Commissioner Osborne. The candidate Paul Leonard is here tonight. Welcome for joining us. At least on my part, I have the deepest respect for you. And any comments I make will be about this agreement and this agreement only, not about yourself as a potential consultant. So I would like you to know that on the front end here.
I would just like to make one comment. Both Commissioner Osborne and Wolk mentioned that an executive session wasn't available or not accepted by this board. I believe the township interim manager did offer to hold an executive session this evening, which was declined. So I will state that for the record.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I didn't decline anything, but in any case, so let me go on.
Couldn't decline an exec session.
I asked both of you on the telephone to meet this afternoon. And, oh, I'm sorry, you. It was set up with Commissioner Osborne. It had not been yet. It was an email sent by Randy Cope. I did speak to Mike after that email went out. And I suggested to him, we had an opportunity to meet before tonight's meeting to go over any legal questions you would have. Brad did not respond to the email, and Mike declined in his conversation with me to attend and also did not respond to the email. And I didn't know if Attorney Zader at this point needed to.
I'd like to make a quick comment about what you said. Yes, we had that conversation. I gave a reason. I told you that upon reviewing this agreement, I had many comments of a significant nature, of a legal nature, of a factual nature. And I felt that the gravity of the issues that we need to discuss and the number of the issues warranted an exec session. And I didn't think the time that was allotted for the other subject we discussed, 45 minutes before this meeting, was going to be sufficient. And that was the reason why I said I didn't, I didn't think we would be able to accomplish what we needed to accomplish in that 45-minute period.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Solicitor Zader if there was any comment that you needed or you felt was appropriate at this time before we move on.
Certainly, if the board members individually would like to make comments or ask questions about this agreement that is up for a potential vote, that's free game. You certainly can do that as individual commissioners. If there's something that arises, as Mr. Osborne had suggested, that I think is, I'll say crossing the line, really should not be discussed in public, I'll be glad to say so. But do recognize that even though certain matters may be discussed in executive session, it does not mean that the board must discuss an executive session. But that said, if things get to the point, and I hope they certainly don't, where I'm concerned about the township, then I'll do my best to speak up.
Thank you very much.
So President Kelly, is it okay if I continue with my questions?
Of course.
Thank you. So my first set of questions, actually, I asked my first question of the board. I didn't hear a response. And that is, what is the problem we're trying to solve and how does this agreement solve that problem? But my next set of questions is for Solicitor Zader. So, and this is all because I'm asking these questions because I'm not aware of the answers. This agreement just came to us via email yesterday afternoon. So it's the first time I saw it. It's the first time I knew anything that might be in it. So first of all, I'd like to understand, and I have a reason for asking this question, which will become apparent later on. But Solicitor Zader, can you tell us how this agreement was originated? Who initiated it? When and who reviewed it prior to tonight?
Sure, I can tell you what I know, Mr. Osborne, and it's this. My understanding is that I've been informed that it was Mr. Paul Leonard who prepared the original agreement. It was forwarded to me by Randy Cope at some point last week. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what day. That same day, I provided to Attorney Jennifer Aldifer in my office, asking her to review it. And after she reviewed and edited it, it was then turned back to Randy Cope. That's the history from where I sit.
Okay. Thank you. So if I can, let me just go paragraph by paragraph.
May I ask? I made a point earlier that the board has not met with you to discuss this agreement, legal issues or otherwise. Have you had any discussions about this agreement with any board members?
Five to 10 minutes prior to this meeting, after the board's executive session, you and I spoke very briefly. I had no other conversations with board members with regard to the substance of the document. I can tell you that I've had discussions anticipating that there might be board discussion this evening, but nothing of substance with regard to the contract itself.
Thank you. So in summary on that, no individual or collectively the board had any input into this agreement. Is that correct? From your knowledge?
I'll say that I assumed that the document that Mr. Leonard drafted was based upon dialogue among the Board of Commissioners members. But that's all I have knowledge of.
That may be true. I was not one of those board members.
May I say on that point, the only time that I've had any conversation with Paul Leonard was back in the first of several meetings back on January 14th. In fact, only found out same time as Solicitor Zader, I think, that there was anything in motion here to create this agreement.
Okay, thank you. So if I start on page one, recitals, it says, whereas consultant is willing to provide management and professional assistance services in accordance with the terms specified herein. So one of the things that surprises me, and I'd just like to understand why the word management is put into this whereas. My understanding is, was that this was a professional consulting arrangement to be provided to the township manager, interim township manager, as a resource if and when the interim township manager wanted to tap into that resource. I see the word management services, management assistance in here. And I ask, how did management get in there and what does that mean? And Randy, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just, actually, our board should be reviewing this. So I'm interested in anyone who has the answer, but if we're going to prove this, our board should know the answer to that.
Maybe I should comment on that.
Okay.
Generally speaking, preamble to a contract, recitals, as it's referred to here, are not viewed as being the binding part of the agreement unless it says to the contrary. So when one reads that first whereas clause, in my view, the meat of what it really relates to is under paragraph five, where it has the duties of the consultant. So in my view, when it says provide township management services and professional assistance, it's really referring to what is in the substance of the agreement, which is paragraph five, providing advice and recommendations on township operations and on the duty set forth in the township manager ordinance, et cetera.
Thank you, Solicitor.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you for that, Solicitor Zader. Commissioner Osborne's doing a practical thing by going paragraph to paragraph, and I don't really know any other way to accomplish this. I'd like to highlight there's interrelationships throughout this agreement. And if you want to see the forest through the trees, you'd need to hear several comments across these paragraphs. Solicitor Zader just mentioned one of them. The mention of management responsibilities in the second paragraph of the whereas section and paragraph five that outlines the duties. Those two go in tandem, and we're going to have to discuss them in tandem. I share Commissioner Osborne's point that in any discussion we had, we never had any discussion about a consultant taking on a management responsibility in this township. We talked about them taking on a consulting responsibility. And we highlighted that our interim township manager, Randy Cope, would remain as interim township manager as the single manager of the entire staff. And we're not bringing on a consultant to take on a management role. So I don't know where we're going to talk about the disposition of these items based on Commissioner Osborne introducing this and based on my comments. I don't think the word management should be, remain in this second whereas paragraph. I think it should be stricken, and we'll talk about paragraph five when we get there.
Just a question, Commissioners Wolk and Osborne. If management, if the word management was taken out, would you feel better and the agreement stand?
Well, I have, first of all, to answer that, I would feel much better because then there's no confusion that whoever we may hire has any responsibility or right to any management function at all.
Yeah. And Mike?
Solicitor Zader, is it possible to remove the word management from the first whereas?
Certainly. If that's the plan, the board could easily do that.
In second.
In both whereas clauses.
Or whatever it might appear.
Right. So if that were the, I'll say if that were the only issue, removing that, taking that language out, if the board were to choose to move ahead with that edit, those edits, that would work, and certainly the retyping, reword processing could follow tomorrow, next day.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd like to answer as well.
I think this Solicitor just answered for us.
Mr. Kennedy, Commissioner Kennedy asked me a question.
Agreed to take the word management out.
He asked me a question. If it was taken out, would it suffice? And I haven't answered that question yet. My answer is yes. In fact, I won't mind, although I'm prepared to go through every paragraph and the issues I believe exist. I'm prepared to address them, make whatever revisions I think need to be made, and then to move forward with this. But I want the opportunity to discuss every paragraph.
So if we go down to paragraph four, hours of work, I'm concerned about the wording consultant self generally works 16 hours each week or such time as is necessary and authorized by the interim township manager. Generally, I will try to share my view with you about what those words mean and what they could mean. But we never did talk about any limited or capped number of hours in our discussions, as I remember. But let me get to the end of that sentence, which really concerns me. Authorized by the interim township manager, perform the duties assigned by the interim township manager, I agree with that, or the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners, who is never discussed, is someone who can work with the consultant to do anything in the township. That's problematic for me. I don't know if that, I don't know the genesis of that, but I think we should discuss it.
I concur on this point. In fact, out of every comment I have in paragraph four and paragraph five, it's the inclusion of the Board of Commissioners. In my mind, we didn't agree it. We should not agree it. And there's reasons why we shouldn't agree it. I could elaborate. It changes the structure of our government, to be perfectly honest, and I don't think we can accept that. We have an ordinance called restrictions on commissioners. And if the board were to give direction to a consultant and as opposed to having a discussion with our interim township manager, we would not be in compliance with that restrictions on commissioners' ordinance. This states that the BOC can give the consultant direction. We didn't agree that. It's almost as if we can do that and bypass the interim township manager. It states that and implies that the consultant in part works for the BOC. We had explicit discussions that the consultant will report, work for and report to the interim township manager and not the BOC. I think this has to be stricken. I have some other comments, but I'll hold them in reserve at least for a moment. Commissioner Kennedy asked a question on the previous paragraph. If the words in paragraph four, quote unquote, or the Board of Commissioners, were stricken and on paragraph five in a similar fashion, where it says at the end, quote unquote, or township Board of Commissioners, if that was stricken, that would be satisfactory. It would mean that the interim township manager gives the consultant direction. The consultant works for and reports to the interim township manager and not the Board of Commissioners.
Solicitor Zader, are you aware of the origin of that clause or the Board of Commissioners?
I am not. I edits. Language had been in the version of the document that originally came.
Okay.
It was not stricken in my office.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I have a comment.
So.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kennedy, I overheard your comment that let it go for a while and then you'll call for a vote.
That's correct. You did hear that right.
I don't think that's appropriate. We're talking about a legal agreement. We're trying to be as productive as we can here. And we're making some good progress, I think. But since this is a legal agreement at the top of our government structure, I think you should have some forbearance here and let Commissioner Osborne and I continue.
I also said, Commissioner Wolk, that I would let it go for a while before I called for the vote. And also, we did have it reviewed. It is a legal document. We had it reviewed by our solicitor. We've all read it. I mean, I don't know why we have a solicitor anymore if we have you and Brad. But he reviewed it. He reviewed it. He gave his input. It was edited. He said it was edited and reviewed and sent back to Randy. It's.
Commissioner Kelly.
That we do have a solicitor and who I respect immensely, has been a solicitor for the township for years. I believe the document is well-written and edited in favor of both the individual consultant and South Whitehall Township. We're both protected well. It's open-ended in the sense that we can get out. It's, 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 it's open-ended in the sense that we can get out on either party with, I believe, a two-week notice. So if for some reason we don't feel as though things are going the way they should, we can certainly do that.
Let me ask.
About the BOC being in there, it's actually a line that I particularly liked, that I would have a hard time striking because I did actually like that, that paragraph. I think that Randy is doing a fantastic job, but I also believe that if, as a board, as BOC five of us, came up with things to present to the consultant on behalf of the township, it would be beneficial for the township.
All right.
Just one person who's trying to do it all.
So we've, we've talked through the fine details of this. We have a government structure. We have a board who speaks to our township manager, right? I don't have any issue if the board wants to accomplish something and explains it to the township manager and we take a vote, and then the township manager in turn or explains it to the consultant. I don't have an issue with that. All right? I don't have an issue if we have a meeting where the township manager is present and he invites the consultant to have this discussion with the board. What I do have an issue with is the way this is written, it's either or. I have an issue with the board talking directly to the consultant, either without the township manager present or in some fashion bypassing the township manager. That is just, that is not good government.
So on that point, Commissioner Kennedy, would you be in agreement to remove that phrase? You stated that you were not.
If that's what it's going to take to get this through, let's move forward. But I think when we're getting done, we're going to have about two and a half lines on that.
Is there any other objection from anyone else on the board from removing those?
I'm not finished, but I certainly can wait for others.
So to Solicitor's Later, then if you would remove Board of Commissioners from paragraph four and five, I think we can move along.
That can be done.
Thank you very much.
Okay. This is not a contractual issue, it's a commercial issue. I, okay, I can see no one in the audience has this agreement in front of them. Is that correct? And it was not on board docs? Okay. So in here is an hourly rate of $130 an hour, and in hours of work, there is no maximum. There actually isn't a clear provision that there's a minimum. The minimum, it's not clear, it could be zero hours if that's what our interim township manager has all the time for that week or the next week. So to have an agreement where if the township manager isn't in a position to consult the consultant, we're still going to pay for at least 16 hours, I don't agree with that. If you, if you project this out to 40 hours a week and there's provisions in here to do that, that's $5,200. $5,200 a week. That does an annualized amount of $260,000 a year.
There's consideration, it could take three to four months to hire our township manager. I know this isn't what's intended, but to Commissioner Osborne's point, if this were to be 40 hours a week for four months, that's $88,000. So another one, this is easily solved, all right? Lot of talk, but the solutions are pretty easy when you, when you think about it. To me, this statement doesn't say anything. It says the consultant self generally works 16 hours each week. It doesn't state a minimum, it doesn't state, Randy can say, I have no need or I can't fit it in this week, and there's no max. I don't even, I don't even want to state what the max should be, but there ought to be some words around the fact that there's a minimum and a max, and then everybody can get on and do work as Randy sees fit.
Solicitor's Later, do you have any guidance for us on that particular matter?
If the concern is that this might be viewed by some people as providing for a minimum of being paid for 16 hours even if no work is done, that could be wordsmithed easily enough to eliminate that concern.
Thank you. If you would take care of that for us, I appreciate it.
If I drop down to nine E. I'm going to start out by asking our Solicitor, is the Board of Commissioners, the word township is used in this document fairly often, is the Board of Commissioners part of this definition of township in this agreement? Or does that refer to the administration?
Township is the party to the contract. Township would be entering into the contract, and as envisioned by this action item on the agenda and the contract signature of the end by President Kelly, it really is the township always, with anything going on from a contractual standpoint, unless delegated either by ordinance, township manager contract, or by action of board at a public meeting, where it would go to the township manager, ordinarily action taken on behalf of township is by the Board of Commissioners. So to answer the question, Mr. Osborne, the township is the party, and the township is entering into the contract through the act of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Perfect. So that clarifies five, nine E, where it says this agreement may be modified only in writing executed by township and consultant. So in what you just said, does that imply or actually state that the Board of Commissioners must be part of the decision that is referred to in nine E? That this agreement can only be modified by the township?
Correct. If the board tonight after discussion were to adopt this contract and execute this contract, it stands as the governing document on this topic. If there's to be any modification of it, any amendment of it, it would have to come back to the Board of Commissioners for such amendment, and then there'd be amendment executed based on direction from a vote of the board.
Okay. Thank you. And that would be part of the record that that was the answer. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not, that this board is not forfeiting their right to modify, create, change, eliminate any agreements, but.
To be more precise, if the concern is that the interim township manager, Randy Cope, could unilaterally modify this contract without Board of Commissioners' action, the answer is no.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. I guess nine F can be stated as complete after our discussion this evening. It certainly wasn't complete without any discussion, in my view. The agreement has been prepared by and through the joint efforts of the parties here too. The Board of Commissioners was not involved, but I guess we're involving ourselves now, so that statement would become true then?
The answer is yes, but in all candor, I think from a legal perspective, when it says that it's been based upon the action of both parties, the involvement of both parties, the joint efforts of both parties, that's really referring to the act of this board voting, not necessarily having been involved in discussion, negotiation of the verbiage in the contract itself.
Okay. Nine G, I have a question, and this is refers to, my question is, in involving around communications, all notices, statements, requests, demands, consents, and other communications permitted or desired to be relative to this, blah, 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 blah. So these communications, if they're coming from the consultant, what, are they going to Randy and not the board? I guess that's my question. I want to make sure I understand, what communications are we talking about and where are they going? My personal belief is communications from the consultant go to Randy. If Randy and the consultant have something that rises to the level of needing to involve the board, that would be Randy's decision. So what?
That's what I would certainly envision happening. Let me first begin by saying that this notice provision really is utilized only in the event of some sort of problem or dispute. It's not the means of day-to-day communication between Randy and Mr. Leonard, should he be engaged under this consulting contract, but let's suppose the notice provision does need to be used. What would happen, because it's designated here that gets addressed to the township at its normal address, is it would go to South Whitehall Township, 4444 Walbert Avenue, et cetera. I would assume that that type of mailing would come to Randy through the normal mail process, and Randy would deal with it or if need be, address matters with the Board of Commissioners.
That makes sense, and I do read that in that, but I want to clarify, though, that communication can also be emails, and I do not want emails from the consultant that are, should be directed to Randy, made to the board at the same time. I don't hear any response, and that's okay. So I'd like to go down to the insurance. Which is?
Paragraph three.
Three. Thank you. Okay. So this, this paragraph says township shall provide insurance coverage for consultant under its public official's liability insurance policy and consultant shall be specifically endorsed by township's insurance carrier for such coverage. I've learned subsequently that there's no additional premium, there's no rider to this, but my question is this, Attorney Sater, and there is some language related to this throughout the, or in another part of the agreement, but let me just ask. So if there is, this consultant would be covered under our policy, as this agreement says, but if there is a cause for claim and the township insurance company then defends the township, is that how that works? How does that work?
That's right.
Consultant doesn't have.
That's right. First of all, you mentioned there's no rider, technically correct, but there is an endorsement.
Yes.
And I know that staff has coordinated with the township's insurance professionals to discuss that, and when you mentioned a moment ago, Commissioner Osborne, that this provision relates to another aspect of the agreement, I suspect you're talking about the indemnification, the whole harmless provision.
Yes.
And let me just explain how the two work in tandem.
Perfect. Thank you. The marriage between those two.
Absolutely. The township has its insurance policy as specifically mentioned, and if this contract were to be adopted, Mr. Leonard would be covered under that insurance coverage. If there would be a claim of the nature that is addressed by insurance coverage and it involves Mr. Leonard, the township insurance carrier would step up to the plate and be obliged to provide that coverage. The indemnification, which follows later in paragraph eight A, I view it as being the flip side of the coin, and while I'm not suggesting that all this would ever happen, but to make the example clear, let's just assume that one day when Mr. Leonard is here, he gets angry at a resident who stops in and hauls off and sucks him in the jaw. In addition to calling Chief Dorni to discuss the situation in gentlemanly fashion, I am almost certain that that kind of action would not be addressed by insurance because it would be an assault, a criminal action, and in the event that resident sued the township and it's an exclusion under the policy, I'm assuming it is, I didn't look at, I didn't read a 500-page insurance policy, but let's assume that type of activity would be excluded. The indemnity provision here then would make a consultant individually responsible to the township in that circumstance.
Okay. Let's, let's say circumstance is not so extreme, but still need to be defended. Is it the insurance company who will defend the township in this case?
You said if it's not so extreme, so it's not an assault.
Right.
It's some kind of incident that results in a claim.
Correct.
By someone. It would be like any township employee doing the same thing. So whether it be the, basically what this endorsement does and what this obligation of the contract does is for purposes of activities of the consultant, under the insurance policy, he would be treated as if he were an employee even though he's not an employee.
But let me drop to the bottom line. So there's no circumstances based on the fact that the consultant would be covered under our insurance policy, that, that South Whitehall Township would incur any expenses at all, including a deductible related to the defense of a claim?
No, I can't say that. I'm not sure what the deductibles are and the township coverage is. I don't know.
Okay.
And under this particular policy coverage, I'm not sure.
Yep. And I would anticipate that kind of answer. Thank you. So there's potential cost to the township by the consultant not having their own insurance
I'd like to address one issue, which is strictly a legal issue. Paragraph eight B. I'd like to suggest that we add some words that are standard legal language and indemnification and release paragraphs such as this. The words I would like inserted, and in a minute I'll tell you where, the words are quote, in their official and individual capacities, unquote, and the place that would be inserted is in this long list, other professional consultants, representatives, advisors, predecessors, successors, and agents, comma, in their official and individual capacities, comma, parentheses, collectively known as the protected persons. That is standard language, and that language has been included in other township documents in the paragraph on release. When you're done writing, Solicitor's Later, if you could.
I've written down, I have no legal objection to that language being added if that's the pleasure of the board.
Thank you. Is there an objection to adding that? Paragraph eight B. Very good. Thank you.
I'm done.
I guess I have one last general comment. Commissioner Osborne touched on it previously. Paragraph six term, it's just open-ended. It says we can end it when we want to end it, but there's no, there's nothing written about what an end date is.
I personally think the end date should be when the township manager is hired, that should commence the, the end of this contract. That's, that's my view.
And I think as long as we provide two weeks' notice, we'll know by that time, obviously, if a candidate's accepted an offer, and then we can obviously tell the consultant, within two weeks, we'll be terminating the contract.
Sure. If we handle the situation that way, yes, that addresses the very vague language in five.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
I just want to thank the other board members for indulging Commissioner Osborne and myself. We said at the onset, we felt this was extremely important, so thank you for bearing with us going through this.
Are there any questions from the public? So we have a motion and a second on a floor, on the floor, excuse me, to proceed, authorizing the board.
President Kelly, we do still need to run a background check, so the motion that we do make here, I would make contingent upon the candidate passing a background check.
Correct. Thank you. So we have a motion. Well, would you reamend your motion and add the candidate passing, successfully passing a background check?
Yes. Yes, I'll make the motion. I withdraw the original motion. To make a motion, authorize the board president to execute an independent contract agreement with the changes that we discussed, to provide management services and professional assistance on a short-term basis, township continues efforts towards filling current township management, this would be Paul Leonard, and once he is a background check is satisfactorily completed. I make that motion.
Thank you. A motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you very much. I want to just for two. I want to just for to motion that Paul Leonard is here this evening with us. Thank you for joining us in our meeting tonight. And as a board, I'll welcome you. We look forward to working with you here at the township.
Paul, obviously, the changes that have to be made have to be agreed upon by you, not just the BOC, which we agreed on just now. I know you heard them, but you haven't seen them. I don't know if you were how much you were paying attention. But is there anything that stood out that you are going to say absolutely no to? So we don't have to waste another 30 or 40 minutes? That's absolutely fair. Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Moving on to motion eight C. The motion to approve Greenwald's fire rescue request for difference in cost of $3,555.35 between the old versus the new deputy chief's vehicle. And Randy, would you help us with this motion?
Sure, I'd be glad to. On November 4th, 2021, 2012 Chevy Tahoe from Greenwald's Fire Company was involved in a single vehicle accident. Upon appraisal, this vehicle was a total loss. After much work between Greenwald's, the township, and the insurance company, Greenwald's received a payment from insurance for the amount of $21,342.66. Greenwald's was able to locate a very similar 2012 Chevy Tahoe to replace the previously totaled one. The total amount for that new, I'm sorry, 2012 Chevy Tahoe was $24,898. Now, this left the fire company with a shortfall of $3,555.34. We took this proposed reimbursement to the volunteer fire subcommittee on February 7th to get input from the other two fire companies. And everyone agreed that this would be a suitable expense to reimburse Greenwald's from the fire fund. For clarity purposes, this is not a budgeted item, but it can be covered from the contingency line item in the fire fund, as discussed with our finance director, Scott Perret. Since this is an unbudgeted expense, we thought it was appropriate to bring this to the board this evening for a formal motion to reimburse Greenwald's for the shortfall in the replacement vehicle. We do have Chief Andrew Garger here this evening. If there are any additional questions, myself, Scott, and Chief Garger can also help address those concerns.
Thank you, Randy. And I do appreciate you sharing with the board that this was brought before the fire subcommittee for all of the chiefs to
Absolutely.
to opine on it. So thank you. Is there any discussion by the board on this particular item? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, President Kelly. Chief Garger and Chief Heakland, I'm happy to support this. I know it's for Chief Garger in this case, but anytime Chief Heakland, you have a similar need, you'll always have my support. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by the board? Any from the public? None being heard. Do I hear a motion to approve Greenwald's fire rescue request for difference in cost of $3,555.35 between the old versus the new deputy chief's vehicle?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Motion a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here, chief, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Moving on to item D, motion requesting permission to place equipment and vehicles on municipal. Herb, would you help us with this motion? Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Public Works is seeking approval to place some vehicles and equipment on municipal. These vehicles or equipment have been replaced or will be replaced shortly. Public Works is respectfully requesting a motion to approve the placement of vehicles and equipment on municipal. We have rough numbers. We think we will come in around 35,000 to 40,000 when everything is put on municipal.
Hey, Scott, are you able to clarify for the board, the money received through munici bid through the auction process, where that goes in the budget?
There is a line item in the general fund in the revenue piece, which is called sale of fixed assets revenue, where these funds do not necessarily go back to a certain department, but they go into the general fund cash account.
I'm just curious, Scott, is there a reason why they don't go back to the fund where, for example, police vehicle back to police, Public Works, fire? Is there a reason why we don't just replenish the budget where that came from?
Yeah, that's a good question. Not I don't know of a reason that has existed in the past there. As I work with the finance committee to talk about fleet management policies and as we build those things, I think that will give us guidance to, you know, move forward with that kind of thing and design that in the future. But in terms of what's been done in the past, I can't speak of that.
Thank you. I think that would certainly be something worthwhile to look into.
For sure.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board on this motion?
Yes. Herb, what are the costs in here and how did it arrive at them? Are these going to be like the posted costs on municipal?
No, those are the costs that we think we're going to get. We can put a reserve price in on a vehicle on municipal. A lot of times, we don't because these vehicles are not going to pass inspection. So if we don't sell them on municipal, we're going to end up scrapping them because there's nothing else we can do with them. We already stripped everything out of them that is worth anything. So what's left is just the junk, really.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the motion requesting permission to place equipment and vehicles on municipal?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Herb, but please don't leave. Motion E is for you. Motion requesting permission to advertise for roadway milling services.
All right. South Way Hall Township Public Works Department is respectfully requesting permission to advertise the 2022 road milling bid. This road milling bid project will affect the following areas: Clifford Park area, Randview Terrace area, Winchester Heights area. After being milled, the Public Works team will move in and add a leveling course, then followed up with the final wearing course. The whole paving project is budgeted for $1 million. When I ran numbers before budget season, the milling should come in around $175,000 of that $1 million.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this motion?
Question. This is for milling and not the paving, correct?
This is just for the milling. The paving, we already have an asphalt contract with New Enterprise, which I reached out to. They're going to hold their current pricing for us with the trucking of the material in. So that is part of that $1 million. And then we will be laying all the material with the in-house services. But yes, that what we're coming for tonight is just to put the milling out the bid. That's the only part we will need to bid out this year.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the motion requesting permission to advertise for roadway milling services?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And one last motion for you, Herb. We have a motion requesting permission to proceed with purchase of the 2022 Ford Explorer for Southway Hall Township Emergency Management.
Yes. Emergency Management is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of a 2022 Police Interceptor Ford Explorer. This vehicle will be used for emergency management functions. The price for this vehicle is $34,300, and the striping to be done by fast signs for $1,800. This was budgeted for $40,000. The total price for everything will be $36,100, the Ford Explorer. And the Ford Expedition we currently own will be put on municipal once we receive the new Ford Explorer.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions from the board on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of the 2022 Ford Explorer for Southway Hall Township Emergency Management?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Motion a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will abstain from this vote. My husband is the Southway Hall Township Emergency Management Coordinator, and I will abstain from this vote. Motion passes four, one. Four, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not answering. Very good. Thank you. Getting a little slap happy here tonight. Okay, moving on to correspondence and information. Randy, if you would review our correspondence for this meeting?
Sure, no problem. Just to go over a list of some of our vacancies here currently on our boards and commissions, we have one alternate vacancy on our Civil Service Commission, two vacancies on our Landscape Shade Tree Commission, one vacancy on the Parks and Rec Board, one vacancy on the Planning Commission, one alternate vacancy on our Zoning Hearing Board, and one vacancy on our Vacancy Board. Just as a reminder to the public, both here in the audience and on go-to meeting, the volunteer board member application can easily be found on our homepage of our website, southwhitehall.com. I know the board is still interested in receiving new applications for interview consideration. So if you do have an interest in one of these boards and commissions, please fill out that volunteer board member application and submit it to the township. We've got some upcoming meetings here. Thursday, February 17th is our next Planning Commission meeting at 7:30 PM. Wednesday, February 23rd is our next Zoning Hearing Board at 7:00 PM. And Monday, February 28th is our Landscape and Shade Tree Commission at 10:00 AM.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on any of these?
Chief would like to say add something for correspondence as well.
Of course.
If I may, I just want to remind our public that the Southway Hall Township Police Department is holding its second Citizens Police Academy, and we are still taking applications until March 1st. I have some here with me if anybody would like one. The class is slated to start, of course, pending what's going on with the pandemic, but starting on April 7th. So I believe we've got a graduate up at the dais, can give some hopefully some good words as to the program. But we still have some openings. So if anybody is interested, please contact the police department or grab an application. And Sergeant Groger can be emailed to get that information as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Moving on to agenda item 10, direction and discussion. Is there anyone who has anything for direction or discussion tonight? Nothing from the board. Moving on to old business. Randy, would you update us on our old business for tonight?
Nothing new to report. I was hoping to have a proposal for Michael Baker. By this time, another office got hit with COVID. But I did follow up with them earlier this week. I do anticipate to have one here any day. So hopefully, I'll have more to report out to the board here shortly.
Thank you. And our comprehensive plan update. David, do you have anything for us tonight?
That we held the workshop last Tuesday. It was a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission. We got into the prioritizing goals and objectives. Once we go through that process, it's up to staff to kind of sort through that and come up with the more distilled version of those goals and objectives, and then move up forward. So the next meeting is scheduled for, I believe it's March 8th, where we anticipate reviewing those refined goals and objectives, and then starting into resource protection, which includes historic resources, agricultural resources, and natural resources. If we get through that, then we'll move on to community utilities. But we're moving along. And I think it was some really good discussion and happy to engage in that discussion. So please attend the March meeting. I'll mention it at the next meeting as well.
Very good. Thank you for the update. Are there any questions from the board? Any from the public? Thank you. Moving on to courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone that would have any public comment on any non-agenda items? Looks like we have one in the chat.
I do have one in the chat. And the long one, I'm going to try and unmute your microphone so you can just ask your question to the board. If I can get that muted. I think he got disconnected, but he did type in his comment and the long one. I was hoping I wouldn't have to read it. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dr. McDonald, and I can you just grab that one. And I live at 6682 Huckleberry Road. In the interest in transparency and financial responsibility, what is being done about the damage that was caused by the Citronia Fire Department at two separate fire facilities last year? To my understanding, it was considerable amount costing tens of thousands of dollars. Also, with gas prices as high as they are, why do we see fire trucks driving all around the township? Why are they also driving these massive vehicles to do a wah-wah run? It's actually the only time you can see a fire truck driving around South Whitehall at a reasonable speed. Can our police enforce the laws regarding the fire departments reckless and unnecessary speeding? Or do we need to call the state police? Has our police ever enforced any laws regarding speeding or dangerous driving from the fire departments? Something needs to be done. Have you ever seen our fire departments go to a call? It's madness. Can anyone drive a fire truck, or do they simply need to be 18 and have unwavering loyalty to the fire chief and their children? I wish the last board could have addressed these issues instead of arguing over adverbs and phrases listed in the previous minute meeting minutes. After hearing your praises to the fire chiefs, can you conduct an unbiased investigation or explanation to their behavior and risk to the public? Thank you for addressing these issues publicly and in the interest of transparency.
Thank you for your comment, Dr. McDonald. We will certainly look into that matter. Are there any other volunteers for courtesy of the floor? Moving on to item number 13. I need a motion to authorize payment of our invoices and disbursements. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. There is no executive session planned this evening. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you all for being here tonight. This meeting is adjourned.